It's you, Larry. It's you. Good evening. We'll call the special city council meeting for February 18th, 2020 to order. Teresa, will you please do roll call?
Deputy Mayor Decourcy?
Here.
Councilmember Baggett?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Jerraj?
Here.
Councilmember Malinga?
Here.
Councilmember Sterns?
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel?
Excused.
All right. This evening, council, we have one item on the agenda under discussion. It is city organizational overview, and tonight, we have Chief O'Neil to provide an overview of the police department.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Dan O'Neil. I'm chief of police for the Auburn Police Department. I've been here for twenty and a half years. I have a bachelor's degree in criminology from Eastern Washington University, a master's degree in public safety executive leadership from St. Cloud State University, and I'm a graduate of the Northwestern University School of Police Staffing Command. The Auburn Police Department is made up of one hundred and forty employees. It's one hundred and nineteen commissioned and twenty-one non-commissioned. We have one chief, one assistant chief, five commanders, thirteen sergeants, fifty-four officers assigned to the patrol division, six community program officers, nine officers in special ops. That make up our bike officers, the mall and school resource officers, five officers assigned to traffic, and twenty-two detectives. Our non-commissioned personnel consist of two parking enforcement officers, eight police service specialists, two evidence property technicians, three admin assistants, one crime analyst, one police services manager, two police services supervisors, and two animal control officers. Our department is pretty young. As you can see, twenty-nine percent of our current staff has zero to four years experience. So out of one hundred and nineteen officers, twenty-nine percent being assigned to patrol shows the youth of our patrol division. So we've got a lot of young officers out there on the streets. Seventy-three percent of our department has less than fourteen years' experience. So about seventy-three percent of the people working for their department right now aren't halfway through their career. When you look at our budget, our budget is thirty-one point two million dollars. Seventy-four percent of it makes up salary and benefits. One percent supplies, fifteen percent are service charges, and ten percent are the interfund. The police department, unlike some other divisions within the city, doesn't create or generate a lot of revenue. As you can see, looking at the graph in front of you, a lot of our revenue comes from grants that we get refunded for or agreements for law enforcement services, such as our contract with the school district for school resource officers or our muckle-schewed liaison officer. And then the mall. Our fleet has one hundred and three total vehicles. Forty-three of them are patrol vehicles. We have one SWAT command post, one crime scene command post, five motorcycles, nineteen detective vehicles, seven vehicles that are assigned to administration, and two animal control trucks. The remaining vehicles that make up our fleet are miscellaneous vehicles or vehicles that have been seized and converted to police use. Our current patrol vehicles are Ford police interceptors that are all-wheel-drive. The base price of those vehicles is forty-one thousand dollars. And then there's twenty thousand two hundred dollars for decals, window tint, the wrap. The wrap refers to the... That's how they make the car black and white. It's actually a wrap that they put on the front and back doors instead of painting the vehicles. And then other outfit cost. Additionally, it costs thirty-seven hundred dollars for a radio, ninety-three hundred dollars for maintenance, insurance, and fuel. And the total cost of each patrol vehicle is seventy-four thousand two hundred dollars. Our patrol division is the largest division within the police department. Currently, we have forty-seven patrol officers and seven sergeants. We're short ten officers in patrol right now and short two sergeants. We have three patrol canines. We have four bicycle officers, two of whom are currently on medical leave. We have one accident car, two animal control officers, two motor officers, two additional vacancies, three school resource officers, and two mall officers. You can see that in 2019, we responded to eighty-six thousand sixty-two calls for service. That's an eight-point-one percent decrease over the five-year average. 2018, we went to ninety-six thousand calls for service. So we had a ten-thousand-call decrease between 2018 and 2019. On the next slide, I'll show you the number of traffic stops that we've done. The ten-thousand-call decrease from 2018 to 19 can be attributed to the fact that we've done approximately eighty-five hundred less traffic stops. And because of our staffing levels last year, there was less self-initiated contacts by officers, which contribute to that decrease. We've also placed an emphasis on more online reporting, which has reduced the number of calls that officers go to. Officers with the Auburn Police Department are some of the busiest officers in the valley. Each officer goes to approximately seven-hundred-and-twenty-three calls a year. The next closest agency, which isn't nearly as big as us when it comes to population and the number of officers, is Des Moines. It's six-hundred-and-sixty-seven. And then Kent is down there at six-twenty-seven, so almost a hundred less calls per officer per year. In 2019, we arrested four thousand six-hundred-and-six people, and we booked two thousand eight-hundred-and-ninety-three. So we cite and release or refer for charges a good portion of the criminal cases that we investigate. We had a six-point-one percent decrease over our five-year average. And our number of arrests decreased from about thousand ninety-two to forty-six-hundred, so about a four-hundred-number decrease from 2018 to 2019. So here's our calls for service broken down by each month between 2018 and 2019. And you can see in 2018, we did two thousand one-hundred-and-ten traffic stops and another one thousand sixty-two mobile traffic stops, compared to seventy-nine-hundred-and-twenty-nineteen and five-hundred-and-seventy-four mobile traffic stops. So that made up a large chunk of the decrease in calls between 2018 and 2019. Our investigations division is made up of three units, the property crimes, major crimes, and special investigations. Our major crimes unit has one sergeant, two cold case homicide detectives, four detectives assigned to robbery, rape, assault, and homicide, and then two detectives assigned to domestic violence. Currently, we have one vacancy for domestic violence detective. Our property crimes unit has five property crime detectives. We have two vacancies there right now. And we have one detective that's assigned to the auto theft task force. Our special investigations unit is made up of narcotics detectives and pro act detectives. Our narcotics detectives focus on drug-related crimes, and our pro act detectives focus on guns and gangs and other types of organized crime occurring within the city. We have one sergeant assigned to that unit. Additionally, we have one detective assigned to the Valley Narcotics Enforcement Team, which is a DEA task force. We also have a detective assigned to the Tacoma Narcotics Enforcement Team, which is a DEA task force. The reason that we have a detective on each of those task force is because we're a dual-county agency, so we contribute to both the King County Task Force and the Pierce County Task Force. Last year, equitable sharing received from seizures added to those task force was forty-six thousand nine-hundred-and-forty-two dollars. The Auburn SIU detectives seized fifty-three thousand sixty-three dollars in cash last year and twenty-three vehicles. You can see that there's been a decrease in cases assigned to investigations last year, except for major crimes. There's a three-percent increase. We went from one thousand two-hundred-and-seventy-nine cases in 2018 to one thousand two-hundred-and-ninety-two in 2019. And that was clearly up from our five-year average. When you look at property crimes, we have decreased property crimes in every area except for controlled substance. That's up by seventeen percent. Our biggest decrease is in burglary. And I think the trend that explains our decrease in burglary is there's an increase now in porch thefts. So people are waiting for the UPS or FedEx to deliver a package. It's a lot less risk to the suspect to steal a package off a porch than there is to try and unlawfully enter your home and steal property. It's also harder to commit burglaries now with all the Ring doorbells and the other surveillance systems that people have set up around their homes. In persons crimes, there was an eight-percent increase in homicide last year as we went from one homicide in 2018 to five in 2019. Robberies increased. Forcible rapes increased by three. Those increases can be attributed to an increase in population. While there is an increase, none of them are significant. Last year, there was an increase in robberies up around the Green River Community College. There was a Ring going on there early in the year, but we were able to identify the suspects and arrest them. And then a lot of robberies by statute aren't being prosecuted as robberies. Technically, a robbery is unlawfully entering a grocery store, a place where you've been trespassed. And then if you use forced shoplift, that's technically a robbery, but it doesn't meet filing guidelines. So while we have a lot of robberies that are classified as that, they're technically not filed or charged as a robbery. Admin services consist of one commander, one admin services sergeant, who's also responsible for all training within the department, one accreditation officer, three community response team officers. There's one vacancy there right now. One training academy instructor, and one muckle-schewed liaison officer. Each year, the department's responsible for ensuring that every commissioned employee gets twenty-four hours of in-service training. In addition to that, we do four sessions of defensive tactics that are two hours each. So our officers go through a minimum of eight hours of defensive tactics each year. We do ten hours... Excuse me, ten hours of range training, ten hours of patrol tactics and building searches, twenty hours of in-service training, which consists of ethics, bias-based policing, legal updates, topics like that that are required on a annual or biannual basis for accreditation or either through the state. Every three years, our officers go to emergency vehicle operations. Every other year, we do CPR and first aid. And then every officer attends crisis intervention training. Currently, the state requires that twenty-five percent of your officers working patrol attend forty hours of crisis intervention training. The Auburn Police Department, we require every commissioned officer to attend a full forty hours of crisis intervention training. And to date, every officer that is off probation has attended that forty hours of crisis intervention training. And then, at the end of the year, every year, we do mock scenes to test what we've learned through our range and DT training on our crisis intervention training with mock scenes that have an emphasis on de-escalation techniques. Last year, sixty-one citizens are registered for our Citizens Academy. We had fifty-five community events. We completed seventeen thousand seven-hundred-and-seventy-two hours of training. We had seven recruiting events, four manager training sessions that we did with code enforcement. We also sent thirteen new recruits to the Criminal Justice Training Commission for the Basic Police Academy. And we had four block watch meetings. We currently have approximately eighty-two established neighborhood watches within the city. Inspection Services is the fourth division within the police department. It has one commander assigned to it. He's responsible for internal investigations, grant management, and then public records requests. Last year, he completed eighteen internal investigations, eleven supervisory inquiries. He reviewed two-hundred-and-fourteen use-of-force incidents, forty-two vehicle pursuits, sixty-two accommodations. The last division in the police department is the records division. It consists of one records manager, two records supervisors, eight specialists. We currently have one vacancy there. Two evidence technicians. Last year, they processed ninety-eight thousand one-hundred-and-one WASIC transactions to include inquiries. So that means if a car is stolen and there needs to be an entry in the WASIC, that's one entry. If an officer calls and asks them to run a person for warrants or a CPL or an order violation, that's another entry. So as you can see, ninety-eight thousand is quite a bit. They entered two thousand nine-hundred-and-five court orders. They processed two thousand seven-hundred-and-fifty-one warrants. They issued one thousand one-hundred-and-ninety-eight concealed pistol licenses. And they completed two thousand fifty-eight firearm background checks and transfers. This was a huge impact to our records division as legislation last year took effect and transferred all firearm background checks to the law enforcement agency where the person attempting to buy a firearm lives. So if an Auburn resident goes to Olympia or Tacoma to buy a firearm, a background check gets done by Auburn PD. They also completed four thousand one-hundred-and-thirty-seven public records requests, handled eight thousand nine-hundred-and-seventy-three pieces of evidence. They had three thousand one-hundred-and-thirty-nine evidence items destroyed that were purged. They released four thousand three-hundred-and-eighty-nine items, and they sent two-hundred-and-forty-three items to the state lab. We have a pretty big volunteer group that assists the police department. We currently have thirty active volunteers. They completed four thousand hours last year. They conducted a hundred-and-twenty-one patrols, which amounted to four hundred and eighty-seven patrol hours. They drove six thousand five-hundred-and-thirteen-point-eight miles during their patrols. They did twenty-one house checks, two-hundred-and-thirty-one park checks, and a hundred-and-thirteen disabled parking lot checks. So as you can see, without our volunteers, we would be missing out on some services that are dedicated to our community. We're also a part of several regional teams and task force. We're a part of the Valley SWAT team, which consists of Auburn, Kent, Renton, Federal Way, Taquilla, Des Moines, and Port of Seattle. Each agency provides one commander and six operators. Last year, they were involved in thirty-one pre-planned operations, thirty search warrants. One of those was a dignitary protection detail. And then they had eighteen in-progress incidents that they responded to. We're also a part of the civil disturbance unit. That's more or less known as a civil disobedience unit. They respond to protest and civil disturbances. That's another regional team made up of Auburn, Kent, Renton, Federal Way, Taquilla, and Port of Seattle. Last year, they responded to three incidents. We also have a lot of inner-city collaboration with other divisions and departments within the city. Our community response team works closely with code enforcement. They work a lot on the SAFER program and neighborhood problems. They also work with Public Works on engineering issues and traffic control during large events like the Fourth of July or concerts. And they work closely with the parks to try and improve park safety. Our organizational goals are to improve the safety of city parks through directed patrols and enforcement initiatives, creating a safer place for all residents to visit and play. In order to develop a youthful... Or in order to develop our youthful organization and plan for the future, we will develop a plan for succession. The Auburn Police Department will aggressively explore innovative methods of policing so that they can increase the unobligated patrol time. Increased unobligated patrol time will be used to focus on reducing violent crime. In order to increase trust and transparency with the community, we will focus on improving the use of our social media platform. And in order to improve the overall wellness of officers, we will review our current programs and research new innovative programs being implemented across the country. Challenges ahead are hiring and retention. We currently have nine openings and fifteen eligible employees in the next three years. We're all aware of the facilities and the facility study that was presented. We're simply outgrowing our police department. We need to find better ways to manage our workload so that we can increase unobligated patrol time. And a lack of tenure creates challenges for mentoring and training. So we need to develop and focus on our succession plan for future leaders. Questions?
Questions from council? Councilmember Sterns?
Thank you very much. That was really informative. Can you talk about your... The community policing efforts?
Yeah, so we do a lot of things for community policing. One thing we do is officers bid for their shift for their entire year. And then in January, when they come into their new crew, they bid for their district based on seniority. And then that officer works in the same district for the entire year. That way, they get to know the business owners in that district. They get to know the residents that live there. And they get to know the problems and challenges that are unique to that district, so they kind of build that sense of community. We also do the Citizens Academy twice a year so we can bring citizens in and showcase the police department, introduce them to our training, you know, some of our policies and procedures and the way that we do things and kind of how our investigations work. We also have three community response team officers that go out and engage in community events. You know, last year, we went to fifty-five events that includes like Kids' Day at Lesgo Park. We have an officer that goes to the farmer's market that is present and visible. We have a social media platform where we can connect with the community and share information with them. And then we also... Our community response team officers work out there with multifamily housing to try and improve quality of life issues and rental properties. You're welcome.
Deputy Mayor Decourcy?
Thank you, Chief, for that presentation. It's some of the things we're... Yes, I wasn't quite aware of, the cost of vehicles. I know we go through that during budget time, but when you actually see that number, it's pretty impressive when we have to spend that much money on a vehicle, but I know that's the cost. But it's kind of interesting to see all that come together. Question, you mentioned the robbery incidents. So the robbery incidents for like a trespass and then they're arrested for the robbery, but not charged for the robbery. Is that a felony charge that is going on the county prosecutor or not?
Correct. So by state statute, if you unlawfully enter a premise and commit a crime and use force, that's a robbery. So there's been an increase in shoplifts in recent years. So for example, your trespass from Safeway. You go into Safeway, shoplift some property, and then use force against a loss prevention officer as you're committing that crime of fleeing. It's technically a robbery per the RCW, which is a felony. But so for coding purposes, we have to code it as a robbery, but it doesn't get charged as a felony. It gets kicked down to district court for misdemeanor.
Councilmember Sterns?
Can you give us a quick overview of the, I guess, oversight of, say, use of force? And, you know, there were a couple fatal shootings last year. Can you explain how our uses of force are reviewed and who does that?
Yeah. So a typical use of force, a supervisor responds to the incident in the field and makes contact with the officers that are there and the person that was under receiving in the force. And then the officer writes a force report. That force report then gets reviewed again by their supervisor, gets forwarded to the commander who reviews it, and then it goes to the assistant chief, who approves it on the final end. In some situations where it appears that there could be problems or issues with the force, then it gets routed to me, and I determine how we're going to investigate that. When it comes to officer-involved shootings, we've always had outside agencies investigate those. Within the past... If I had to guess, ten years, there's been the Organized Valley Investigative Team, which is a team made up of detectives from the Valley agencies of Kent, Renton, Federal Way, Des Moines, Port of Seattle, and Taquilla. They come in and do an independent investigation of those incidents. And then currently, under the changes made to state law, we're putting some things in place in the future to comply with those standards. And one of those standards is selecting community members to be part of that team to kind of review and just observe the process. You're welcome.
Councilmember Jerraj first, and then...
Thank you, Chief, for all the stuff that you've enlightened us with this evening. One of the things that I am interested in is our tenure at this point. Looks like we still have a very young force. And what are we going to do to change that? Do you have any plans to do that?
Well, I believe it's... And research shows that it is usually better to develop your department with entry-level officers because you're not getting officers with baggage or bad habits. And you can develop them into your culture and kind of into the way policing is done in Auburn with the citizens. And so we're continuing to aggressively hire entry-level candidates to fill our spots. I can say that we have highly capable officers in our youngest... At our lowest ranks that are capable. The unfortunate thing is, is that they're probably going to be forced into supervisory roles or other positions a lot quicker than they may want to. You know, they may want to do specialty assignments like canine or detectives or SWAT or something else before they make a decision to promote. But with being young and the amount of turnover that we're going to experience in the next three to five years, you know, our highly capable officers are going to be promoted a lot quicker than they may like to have been. I'm not sure if that answers your question or not.
I'm more interested in the sense of we need experienced officers to mentor the younger officers. So when I look at this chart, I see very few senior officers. And that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, that's certainly a challenge that we're facing. And I'm not sure I have the best answer for you on that. But a lot of work is falling on the senior officers that we have that are highly capable and able to do the job. You know, just because you're a commander doesn't mean that you get the luxury of focusing on just being a commander. Because you're... We just promoted two young commanders that are highly capable, and they need to put in some work and effort mentoring sergeants and in some cases, younger officers to get them where they need to be. But at the same time, we're also sending officers to training to help with that mentoring and development. Just last year, we started a new program where we identified our officers in charge, and we sent them all to pre-supervisors, and we sent them to a patrol tactical response class so that they have the competency to handle critical incidents out there on the street, and they're starting to develop their leadership skills. Aside from that, it's a challenge unless we could go out and... Aside from that, it's a challenge unless we can go out and bring in a bunch of experienced officers. But that sometimes doesn't always help, because usually, when officers are leaving to go from one place to another, they've had disciplinary issues or disciplinary record or something else that they're bringing with them. You're welcome.
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Chief, you mentioned the issues with the facilities. We're all quite aware of what's happened to our facilities. So, in your staffing that you have now with the vacancies, is the current facilities built to somehow accommodate those vacancies, or is there so much, there's not enough room even for fully-staffed officers and sergeants and the rest of them?
Well, it's certainly full. When we get those positions filled, we're probably going to have to move people out of the locker rooms, at least the male locker room. So, if you have a take-home car, you're a detective, where you don't come to work and dress into your uniform each day, you're probably going to lose your locker, because we just don't have locker space for that. And then, all of the office space that we have will be full. You know, if we were able to add any more officers or detectives in the future, it would be a challenge to find a place to put them. We just simply don't have any more desk space.
Councilmember Baggett?
Thank you, Your Honor. Dan, I know that a lot of people attend that Citizens Academy, and I just wanted to encourage anybody that has not attended that class to please do so, because you get a detailed, like on-the-job training, so to speak, of what the police do, how they do it, and I highly recommend that. I know that the APD, in my perspective, is very well-respected in our neighborhoods, and just keep doing the good job you're doing.
Thank you.
Any questions from councilmembers? Well, I can tell you that Chief O'Neill, as you know, has been in his role for less than three, maybe right around three months. We're approaching that.
That's correct.
Close. He has done a significant amount of work in a very short amount of time, bringing together teams that will work on internal issues and culture and make this a 21st-century police agency where the voices of everyone involved have a value and that they are listened to and responded to. Whether something can be implemented that the officer or other employee would like, or it can't be, there will at least be a follow-up to let them know what's going on and why that might not be able to be accomplished. But the voices of everyone in the department are being listened to, and that will continue to improve, and I see us being a leader in that regard, and that Chief O'Neill's actions will be well-respected within the region and beyond for the work that's being done.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, since this is a special meeting, and there was nothing else on the agenda, we are adjourned until the 7:00 PM regular council meeting.